Good evening. It is Monday, October 11th, 2020, and I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting of the Lansing City Council to order. I ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood? Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Here.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Seven members present. You have a quorum.
That is a quorum, and please note, Councilmember Wood has requested an excused absence this evening. First item on our agenda are the minutes from September 20th, 2021. Mr. Vice President.
We move the meeting minutes as written.
Minutes have been moved. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is public comment. The members of the public wishing to speak will have up to three minutes to address the committee. We ask that you do so down at this podium. If you have a sign-in card, drop it in that box. It is not required to speak. However, please limit your comments to items on the agenda.
Good evening, council. I'm Elaine Fishoff. I'm a resident of Ward Two in the city of Lansing, and I am here to commend Mayor Shore and this, I expect this council for appointing Dusty Horwitt to the Board of Water and Light tonight. I assume that's going to happen, and I wanted to express my pleasure that that is the case. Mr. Horwitt was discovered, in a sense, by the Lansing Environmental Action Team, because Dusty wrote a letter to the City Pulse talking, raising an environmental matter. We went to, we went to him and asked him to apply to the Board of Water and Light because he has an extensive and very impressive background in environmental matters, and I assume you remember that there've been a number of us who have been appearing at council and requesting that Board of Water and Light to get board members that have some sort of environmental background. One more comment in connection with him is that board members for the Board of Water and Light are unpaid. The budget of the Board of Water and Light is larger than Lansing's budget. The board has no MPSC oversight, and there, and the council and mayor, I don't, I have no understanding that they spend very much time overlooking what the board is doing or planning to do. I would suggest that maybe that be corrected. The last thing would be, I noticed that you're establishing the Arts and Culture Commission. The mayor has created a, an Advisory Commission on Sustainability. I would ask that the council in the future consider raising the status of that body to a city commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
I'm Randy DeKays, 418 North Sycamore, Lansing, and like Elaine, I'm here to strongly support the nomination of Dusty Horwitt to the BWL Board of Commissioners. At last, we have a nominee with a background in energy policy, environmental impact of energy production. Not only does Dusty have academic and real-world experience in energy and environmental policy, as you can well see in the credentials that were provided to you in your packet, but he's also worked in the nonprofit sector in senior positions, giving him not, can I, can I pull this down? I'm having a hard time speaking. Can I pull this, can I pull this down?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
He's worked in the nonprofit sector in senior positions, giving him knowledge that will serve him well in the governing board of BWL. In its long pastime, BWL board have a member with Dusty's credentials. Not having BWL board members with these credentials is akin to the Board of Plumbing without plumbers, or the Mechanical Board without contractors. It takes expertise and knowledge of standards, best practices, and state-of-the-art in order for these boards to do their work well. It's heartening to see BWL get such expertise with Dusty's appointment. I'd also, like Elaine, and great minds think alike, and we absolutely did not coordinate this, I'd also like to address the draft ordinance for the new Arts Commission. I'm strongly in favor of the establishment of the Arts Commission. However, I am concerned about the terms of the commission members. With the current wording in the ordinance that you're considering, you are essentially giving members an unlimited term. If the mayor does not put forward a name at the time when the member's term expires, that member could serve indefinitely. There is nothing to preclude the end of the term in the ordinance. And we have just such a situation on the BWL board now, where a term expired at the end of June, and the incumbent is still serving nearly four months later, with no council hearing in sight. Unlimited terms could be easily abused, and I'm sure it would be easy for you to imagine such circumstances. I urge you, I urge you to tighten up the language in this ordinance to prevent unlimited terms, and make it so for other boards and commissions. Finally, like Elaine, I'm also strongly in favor of the formation by ordinance of an environmental or sustainability commission. As climate events become ever more severe, and we continue to experience other environmental degradation in the city of Lansing, it's imperative that you, city council, have a commission that can advise you on mitigation and adaptation. I urge you to act quickly to form such a body. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, let's move on to our first item of business, which is an appointment for Matthew Horwitt as an Ashland member, at-large member of the Board of Water and Light. I don't see Mr. Horwitt, so I'm going to suggest we move on to next item, just to keep things moving. Item B is a resolution setting a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Part 12 Title VI Form-Based Code zoning code. We have with us Brian, Sue, and Andrew from the DMP department. Do you want to take a seat here? Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, council members. Thank you for having us. Brian McRae, Director of Economic Development and Planning, of course. For those at home, joined by Sue Stachowak, our longtime zoning administrator, and Andy Fiedler on our planning team. Thank you for letting us come here tonight to talk to you about Form-Based Code. We'll be somewhat brief, but of course, we're happy to take your questions. Since implementation, we've just discovered that there are some technical corrections that we want to make. I'm going to turn things over to Andy here to sort of walk you through what it is we're doing. We've had several months at hand in putting this to play. Thank you again for your support when this came through. I think we knew there would probably need to be some changes as we went into practice. That's what we've indeed found, and so we're coming back really for you, for the public, to have an opportunity to see what we're doing and to hear what these technical corrections are. Andy, let me turn this over to you.
Councilmembers, I just want to say thank you also for your consideration and support as we've been doing this first major overhaul of the city's zoning code in almost 40 years. Like Brian said, since implementation and actually working with the Form-Based Code, our planning and zoning staff has found some typographical and editing errors, and need to clarify certain language to make the ordinance clearer, easier to understand, administer, and enforce. These amendments are meant as corrections and clarifications. In no way are they meant to contradict the intent and purpose of the design Lansing Comprehensive Plan and the Form-Based Code. Many of the changes listed on the review handout in your packet are simply typographical errors and editing that need to be corrected. Some definitions have been either amended or added, and certain language has been tightened up to make the ordinance easier to enforce. Some of the proposed amendments are intended to reduce the number of properties that would become non-conforming under the new zoning regulations, and to prevent a barrage of rezoning requests and variances. One more substantial change is mobile food vending or food trucks. These were conditionally allowed in most of our commercial districts, but those conditions were marked to be determined. This is our opportunity to actually include those conditions, but they relate mostly to minimum restrictions to protect the right-of-way access paths, rule out excessive signage, include trash receptacles, and include amenities like seating within our co-location of more than two food trucks. Similarly, we have developed standard, minimum standards for solar energy systems, solar panels or solar arrays, that we were treating as accessory by right, but adding this actual language into the code will help the city's sustainability manager in our efforts for Soul Smart designation that would make Lansing easier to do business with for new solar panel installations. One thing that we have been trying to clean up a little bit, there's been like landscaping or parking provisions that are detailed in each district, but it's been a little bit confusing for our residents and developers when they've been coming to us for projects. So we've tightened that language and kind of condensed it only in the landscaping chapter, just because there's little variations between each district. For landscaping, we've set the same standards throughout all the districts to uniformly regulate landscaping setbacks between sidewalks and the building, outside of parking lots, and tightened up the language when, as it relates to screening of parking lots or buildings, if they are within a certain distance from a residentially-used property. For the use table, again, as we've been talking to residents and getting more inquiries about what our allowable uses, we've seen a few issues. So our proposed amendments would eliminate incompatible uses, but also broaden the use table in certain situations to include certain uses that were inadvertently left out of the current ordinance. As for the zoning map, again, after implementation and feeling more inquiries, we've started, we've noticed some mapping errors. Some are, they were accidentally missed as we were working through some of the parcels, but also there are, we've seen that some, there are some mapping errors, errors when one dis, excuse me, when a parcel is on a border between two different districts. So for example, a residential house might be accidentally zoned commercial because it's next to a commercial district, and vice versa. A commercial district was actually zoned residential when it should have stayed commercial. These mapping errors are wholly inadvertent, and this is the opportunity to fix them. So, thank you for your time, and we welcome any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate the description and the update. I know that you've worked hard on this, and I've talked to Brian a few times on this issue, so glad to have you before us this evening. Any questions from the committee on these technical changes? Councilmember Jackson, I have a feeling I know where you're going with this.
I don't know. Thank you. Can you elaborate on how the new Form-Based Code makes it easier for new solar panel projects and businesses, or can you emphasize on that?
Yeah. So, we were treating them as allowable, as an accessory use, so anybody in a residential zone or a commercial district could put a solar panel on their building already. We've just added some language basically stating that fact, so it wasn't like de facto, and this would help our Soul Smart designation, but also clarify some points for anyone who's looking to do solar installations, that these are the rules and that it is allowable by right as an accessory use.
Thank you very much. With that being said, I'd entertain a motion to pass the resolution setting the public hearing, which I-
November 8th.
November 8th.
So moved.
There's a motion before us. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is an ordinance to establish the Arts and Culture Commission. The plan to take this all the way this evening, I know there was some discussion a few weeks back about the number of members, but I don't know of any amendments coming to the resolution or the ordinance, so I will ask for a motion to get the ordinance in front of us.
So moved.
It's a proper motion. Is there any further discussion on this? We do have Mike Marriott here, if there are questions, but I think we've, I think we've, we've had a couple meetings on this already, and appreciate his time so far, so absent any further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Marriott. We will probably approve this in a few hours, so thank you for your time. Next item, still not seeing Mr. Horwitt here, is the resolution for hosting virtual meetings. I just want to, if I may, pass the gavel for just a second, Mr. Vice President. Sure. So, the Open Meetings Act has been changed several times over the last 18 months to accommodate pandemic, states of emergency, military leave, all sorts of things like that. One of the provisions that sets in there is the ability for members of a public body, so the eight of us, to participate remotely if a medical condition prevents them from attending in person. That provision is allowable until December 31st, 2021. We have to codify it in our rules to set a procedure. We've been getting some questions from some boards and commissions around the city that have asked for this to happen, and I had Lisa, who is here to answer any questions, if you have any draft this for us, so that we could put the procedures in place. It is just a resolution, so it will not require a public hearing and all that, but basically, there are provisions in here that allow for state of emergency, virtual participation for military service, and then the one that I think is probably most interesting to us is the medical condition, which allows you to participate as a member of the body with a medical condition. If attending the meeting would, in person, would exacerbate the member's medical condition or expose other members to a contagious medical physician, condition, then the member may request to attend virtually. Request, just also very clearly, you do not have to attend if you're on your sick bed and would rather watch Netflix, but you may request a virtual participation. We are asking that requests for medical extension exemption be given in writing to the chair of the Board of Comis, or Commission, and the individual preparing the meeting agenda. So, in our case, it would be Sheri or Renee, and then the chair of this body, myself, or the chair of each committee, at least 24 hours in advance, because it does take some time to get this set up. They are, we are requiring in this ordinance a medical provider's attestation that the necessity exists for the member to not be there in person, but not divulging the member's illness or medical history, rather that they just should not be around a group of lovely individuals like ourselves. And then it is still up to the discretion of the chair as to whether or not it would be allowable, that is, under the Open Meetings Act. So, once permission has been updated, granted, the agenda must be updated to indicate that a specific member will be participating virtually, and the person must follow the rules we are all used to, stating where they are, city and state, per the Open Meetings Act. So, you must include the location in the meeting minutes, and we are asking that telephonic communications mean video communication. So, I've spoken with City TV, and we think we can get a member zoomed in via city services, so I guess it would be teamed in with 24 hours' notice, and still potentially get the broadcast to work the way we think it is, it will work. So, hopefully, we won't have the need for this. We will all stay healthy and safe, but we are missing a member this evening for a medical condition. I don't know if that person would have attended virtually if the option existed, but we do need to get this put in front of us per the Open Meetings Act. So, I will move the resolution and then hand it over to the Vice President.
All right. So, there is a motion on the floor. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I don't have a problem with the, with the, with the resolution, just that, you know, sometimes, like, 24 hours and in the process just seems a bit wonky. If you have, say if you come down with strep throat at the end of the day or something, or something happens, not that I'd want to be at a council meeting, but why did we come up with the 24-hour timeframe?
It was a combination of 18 hours is the minimum posting requirement, and then that gives us six extra hours to kind of figure it out.
Okay.
I mean, I will tell you, I was sick last week pretty badly, and I wouldn't have participated remotely.
Oh, no, and I wasn't, I wasn't referring to you.
Oh, and I know you weren't. I just, I had strep throat last week, everyone.
But, um, but I was just wondering, the 24 hours just seems a, you know, if you wake up and you feel like crap, you kind of Mister Wendell to do it remotely, that's all.
And I think the, I can speak to this because I helped draft the law in my day job. The intention was, if you had medical conditions that would have been exacerbated by a potential exposure to COVID-19-
Oh.
-that was more what this was. It wasn't, I have a headache and I want to still be here. It was more along the lines of, I can't be around people because it's dangerous for my health.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Now, obviously, it's a little more, it's a little more broad than that in this, in this language, and you could certainly participate if you had strep or those kinds of things. But it is more along the lines of when, before we had vaccines and all that, it was written for folks that were unsure that they wanted to go home or come out into the public, and for instance, here in a community where a state of emergency did not exist, so the body could not meet virtually anyway, so it was to protect vulnerable individuals that served on commissions and boards and councils and things.
Right. Thank you.
That's at least the state intention.
Gotcha.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing and saying no, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass and give the gavel back.
So, I don't see Mr. Horwitt again, so rather than adjourn and make this person come back, I think we're going to go at ease until, just don't leave, don't go too far away. Why don't we go at ease until 6:45? So, I guess you can leave, go grab a sandwich or something if you want, but we'll come back at 6:45, and if the person, if Mr. Horwitt is here, we will dispense with that item. If not, we will push it on to the next meeting. So with that, we are at ease until 6:45. We are back in session. With us this evening, we have Matthew "Dusty" Horwitt. Do you prefer Dusty, sir?
I do. Yes.
Very good. Dusty Horwitt, who was looking to be an at-large member of the Board of Water and Light, Board of Commissioners, with a term to expire on June 30th, 2023. So typically, what we do here is, you have a few minutes, tell us about yourself, explain why you want to serve on the commission, and then we will inundate you with tough questions and grill you until 7:00 PM. So, the floor is yours, Mr. Horwitt, if you'd like to introduce yourself to the commission, to the committee.
Sure. Thank, thank you. And apologies again for, for being late. So, my name is Dusty Horwitt. I appreciate this opportunity to appear before the council, and appreciate Mayor Shore's trust in me and nominating me to serve on the Board of Commissioners for the Board of Water and Light. I'm interested in serving on the board because I believe in public service and that being involved in our community can help improve our lives. My wife and I moved to Lansing about a year and a half ago from Washington DC because she took a job at Michigan State. Since then, I have become active in the Lansing community with the Lansing Environmental Action Team, with the Inglewood County Democratic Party. I've written for City Pulse, and would like to continue my involvement in the community by serving on the Board of Commissioners of the Board of Water and Light. I'm a lawyer, former reporter, former US Senate staff member. I have 15 years of professional environmental experience working for environmental nonprofits on a range of different issues, from climate to oil and gas and metal mining impacts on water quality to bioenergy, and I'd be delighted to bring that experience to the board. I'm also a certified energy master by the Virginia Cooperative Extension Service, which means that I completed a course in weatherproofing people's homes, installing low-flow water devices, and energy-saving light bulbs. As someone with professional environmental experience, I would be the only person with that type of background as a voting member on the board, although I know that Douglas Jester, who is a non-voting member, also has significant professional environmental experience, and I would look forward to working with him as well as with the other board members. I'll just say briefly that environmental issues are some of the most important facing the Board of Water and Light, particularly reducing greenhouse gas emissions to avert the worst impacts of climate change, and also protecting our water quality from various contaminants, especially emerging threats like so-called forever chemicals, otherwise known as PFAS. I have some recent experience working on PFAS. I wrote a report for the nonprofit Physicians for Social Responsibility, published in July, about the use of PFAS in oil and gas extraction, and that report received coverage in the New York Times, Philadelphia Inquirer, and other outlets. I would, I bring a lot of experience to, to these issues. On climate, I would, I would want to ensure that, that the Board of Water and Light meets or exceeds the recommendations of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change for Reducing Greenhouse Gas Emissions, which are that we should reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 45% below 2010 levels by 2030 to avert the worst impacts of climate change, and we, we want to, we must meet zero net emissions by 2050. The, the contacts that I've developed through my environmental work, I think, could help inform the Board of Water and Light on these issues, including scientists and engineers who I've worked with. And then on the water quality side, I've also worked with a number of toxicologists and chemists who I think we could call on to, to provide guidance to the Board of Water and Light in making sure that our, our water supplies are protected, and that we continue the Board of Water and Light's excellent environmental record. Finally, I do have experience in anti-racism work and racial justice issues in my hometown of Arlington, Virginia, including helping to remove Confederate monuments and shining a light on the history of school integration in Arlington. I've continued that work here in Lansing by writing an article for City Pulse on the unusual anti-slavery statue of Austin Blair in front of the state Capitol, and, and why that is both rare and important, and I look forward to contributing to anti-racism work, diversity, equity, and inclusion work as a member of the Board of Water and Light. So, with that, I'll stop and be happy to take your questions.
Well, thank you very much. I think that's a very thorough background and very qualified for the position. I really appreciate, Mark, if you'll tell the mayor, appreciate this nomination. Other questions or discussion? See, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, Dusty, for your willingness to serve on this important board. Training, education, and experience. This so much isn't a question. I know it's right before recess, so I'll try to be quick. But training, education, and experience for this important board, I'm so glad that you have it, every one of those categories, and since everything's so important to our future, I think it's important that people that serve on the board have those types of qualifications, training, background, education, and experience. So, a question. When you mentioned that you support the International Panel Report that talks about reductions by certain years, do you, how do you categorize natural gas production and use in that net-zero effect?
I think natural gas is a fuel that we want to move away from in order to meet that goal. Natural gas is, is a little tricky, because when natural gas is burned, it emits 50% less carbon dioxide than when we burn coal. And so, from that perspective, it looks like it's a better alternative. As some people have said, it looks like a bridge fuel. However, over the past decade, research has shown that if you add in the unburned methane that is emitted during natural gas production and distribution through pipelines, that that, that unburned methane going up into the atmosphere acts as a much more powerful greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. So, when you add those two together, the carbon dioxide emissions when natural gas is burned, and the methane emissions that are unburned that go up into the atmosphere, natural gas is not much better than coal. And so, it's, it's something I think we should move away from. I will just add quickly that I know the community and the Board of Water and Light decided to build a relatively new natural gas plant. I respect that decision, but I do hope that natural gas is something that the Board of Water and Light could move away from before the, the end of the, the projected lifespan of that natural gas plant.
Well, thank you. It's just really refreshing to hear comments from someone with training, education, and experience in that type of field. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, President Spatafor, and thank you, Mr. Horwitt, for coming tonight. You've have some praise from some people who really care about this issue, so I appreciate that. I've got a few questions for you, just to get your perspective and such, on the Board of Water and Light. It's very important to us and the city. Obviously, it's a publicly-owned utility, so the, the one thing that council really has in terms of- has in terms of oversight is the board. So this is the reason these kind of questions come out at this point, because this is just the one place that we can kind of make some changes where we need to. And I, I think that this is probably going to be a positive one. So I've got a series of questions here. I'll ask the first. Eighty to 90% of our, of our renewable sources right now are coming from energy recapture from trash burning. What is your perspective on that as a renewable, clean energy source? And then if you oppose that, those sorts of levels of trash burning, how would you suggest that we start moving away from that practice?
So my understanding from reading the Board of Water and Light's material is that it's, they're burning gas captured from trash, I think. And I, and I believe that that would be methane, the same type of gas that is emitted unburned in natural gas drilling and distribution. So it's, it's a difficult issue because on the one hand, this is, it's burning, you know, a gas which creates greenhouse gas emissions, which is something we want to move away from. On the other hand, if we didn't burn that methane, it might go up into the atmosphere uncombusted, where it would act as a more powerful greenhouse gas than if we burned it and emitted carbon dioxide. So I guess the, I don't have a clear answer to your question right now, but it's something I would want to look at to see if there is a better alternative to doing that.
Thank you for that. You know, these are, I'd just like to see how people think. You don't have an answer right now. These are things to think about, obviously. You know, a couple of years ago, I sat down with the Board of Water and Light and asked them, you know, what is the cost per percent of renewable energy that we put in the city? And the, the number, I don't recall off the top of my head. I figure with inflation, it's now 1.5 million-ish for that. And one of the things that we have with the majority of people on the board currently is their main concern is cost, obviously, being a public utility, we're looking at making sure that those of fixed incomes can afford the utilities and all of that stuff. How do you propose taking your perspective into that conversation? And how do you work with people who might disagree with you in that way?
On the cost issue?
Oh, I guess that's a loaded question. You can answer it more broadly than that, but you know, just how you deal with people who dissent in your opinion, especially when it comes to something that's important as this?
Well, I would, I would say, one, keeping utilities affordable is very important, and I would certainly prioritize that on the board, along with emphasizing renewable energy and, and water quality. The, the stats that I've seen show that the cost of wind and solar, the two most prominent and best forms of renewable energy, have come down significantly over the last decade and now are competitive with fossil fuels. So one response is that the, the costs of those energies are competitive. There's also, I think, a lot of work to be done on reducing energy consumption, which would lower people's energy costs. I was glad to see that the Board of Water and Light has a couple of different programs, at least, in, in that regard. One, that gives people who fall below certain income thresholds a free energy audit and a kit to help reduce energy in their homes. I would want to make sure that, that the Board of Water and Light is getting the word out about that program so people can take advantage of it. And then, then there is another program that gives people rebates if they purchase energy-efficient equipment. So I think combining those two facts, the, the lower cost of wind and solar, and then the potential for increasing our investment in energy efficiency, I think we could keep costs affordable for everybody.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Horwitz. I really appreciate that. My last question, and this is particularly important to this council, what is your position on the sale of the Board of Water and Light to a private entity?
I would be opposed to that. I, I think that public utility is likely to be more responsive to the needs of residents of Lansing than a company that has to report to its shareholders.
Perfect. Thank you. That's, you know, that's what we like to hear around here. It is really important that it's a public utility. I think from most of our perspective on here, but I don't speak for everybody, I speak for myself. So thank you, President Spatafor. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garza?
Thank you, Council President. Appreciate you being here today. You're, you're quite impressive when it comes to applications in your, what you provided. So I guess I got two questions. The stats that you just gave to Councilman Jackson regarding the greenhouse gas emissions and the methane, now, the Board of Water and Light, it's my understanding that's a combined cycle power plant. Now, were you given your stats, was that from a single cycle? Because my understanding is that the combined cycle doesn't provide as much greenhouse gas emissions.
The statistics I'm citing are from a paper published in the journal Science from 2018. I can't recall what type of plant they, they look at. I, I can get you that, that data if you want. I think the, I, I, I think that I have seen statistics along the lines of what you have said, but the question I would have is, do those statistics factor in the methane emissions? Or are they looking only at the carbon dioxide emissions when the gas is burned at the plant? So I guess I would have to check with you on that.
Yeah. I mean, when you come back to council, actually, it's going to be this evening, don't it? Yeah, okay. Well, maybe if you could follow up with me, I'd appreciate that. I just want to make sure that we are getting the right facts out there. And my, my other question would be, is as we're moving towards electronic vehicles, the infrastructure isn't really here set up very well for the charging stations and whatnot. And, and as we move towards that, do you think that the renewables, whether it's wind or solar, is going to be enough to fill that need?
The short answer is, is I don't know. I'd have to see the data. I did look at the Integrated Resource Plan for the Board of Water and Light and saw that they have, they projected a range of different demand for, for electric vehicles. There's a low case, a medium case, and a high case. I, I think that's one of the big issues that the board will have to address in the years ahead, this potential for significantly increased demand from electric vehicles. What, what I would hope is that there would be a way to meet that need through wind and solar plus efficiency investments. A friend of mine is active in her community in Pennsylvania on climate issues and said that they just didn't, an energy audit, this was in a suburb of Philadelphia, they had brand-new buildings that were supposed to be very energy-efficient, and they found even in those buildings, there were various technologies that they, they didn't even know existed, like an air filtration system that was set to hospital-grade air. This was pre-pandemic, and hospital-grade air wasn't necessary, and it consumed a lot more energy than otherwise should have been the case. And so just by changing that setting and some other settings in those buildings, they were able to save like $16,000 a year, 200,000 pounds of CO2 emissions reduced. So I, I'd like to think that there are ways to, to emphasize energy efficiency that could offset some of these, these increased electricity demands that we could be seeing.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions? All those in favor of Adam's motion he hasn't made yet? Adam, would you like to make a motion? Resolution's been properly moved? All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Mr. Horwitz, the council will take this up this evening at our 7 o'clock meeting. You don't have to be there if you don't want to, but we will be able to swear you in. There will be a member of the clerk's office here that can swear you in tonight, or you can make arrangements later to be sworn in at the clerk's office at a later date. There is not a board meeting, I think there was one last week, so there won't be one this week, so you can, you take some time. So it's really up to you. If we see in the audience, we'll pull it from the agenda. If not, we will, we'll let you get sworn in later, at a later date.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate your support.
Of course. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. All right. No further business before this committee. We will stand adjourned.